Folks, this is Steve Sansa, Jim Jones for Veterans and Politics. Today we have Lisa Guzman.
Guzman.
Guzman. She's a candidate for Clark County School Board trustee, District Number A. Jim?
Yeah, I actually wanted to say something before we talked to Lisa. It's interesting because we were talking a little bit before we went on air about a couple of things, and I think it's interesting what she brought up. So first off, I want to recognize her for running for the school board. It's a very important position. Unfortunately, over the years, in my experience since I really actually started paying attention to the school board, about 98, which is interesting because I graduated in 95, didn't really pay attention to the school board when I was actually in school. But now that I'm out of school, and just so viewers and listeners know, I don't have kids. And a lot of people that don't have kids figure like education doesn't matter to them. So they don't stay involved. Well, I've watched the school district for a number of years. And one of the things I find very-
Is it because of your old pal Kevin Chile was on there?
No, this goes way before-
Because he was very entertaining.
Yeah.
Yes, he was. I started watching when Kevin was on-
He got everybody motivated to watch these school board meetings.
So it's interesting bringing that up. So one of the, and I'm like not trying to pick on Kevin here because you know, we have a history. So anyway, one of the things I found pretty interesting about the school board, or not interesting, but disappointing, and that's what all my questions will be directed in this manner to our current guest, is that the school board unfortunately has become, like they're more concerned about themselves. And now that they've gotten elected to a position, it's about having their particular voice heard and with their stances on certain things. And so what ends up happening, in my opinion, and I've been to several school board meetings, is that the school board trustees, they argue amongst themselves. And it's a big power play. And then what ends up happening is whoever the superintendent is, the superintendent does whatever they want because the school board is so distracted worrying about themselves that they're not doing their due diligence, which is to monitor the actual school board, the actual superintendent. And so the superintendent does whatever they want, and then the governor does whatever he or she wants.
Don't forget the school board union.
Right, so basically it becomes almost just like the US Senate. It's this big debate society where nothing gets accomplished. That's my overall perception of the Clark County School Board, and I'm sure some of the others are the same here in the state. We have 17. And so it's not a rant, it's more of a public service announcement that if you're going to run for school board trustee, take it seriously. It's not about you, it's not about your voice. It's about taking care of kids and it's about taking care of the teachers.
With that, Lisa Guzman.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming on the program. Could you give us a bio?
Sure. So I started my education career as a paraprofessional and I worked my way through college. And I was a teacher for over nine years. I taught English as a second language and I finished my career in middle school, which was the best part of teaching. And then I went into union work. So I was an advocate. I started in 2007 as an education advocate, but mostly in instruction and professional development. And I went around the country. I worked for NEA member benefits as their online teacher. And I taught teachers how to teach online, which I just find ironic right now. Because it took a long time to teach teachers how to teach online. It wasn't something that could happen in two weeks. And then I came to Nevada as the Assistant Executive Director of the Nevada State Education Association. I run their programs. And that means instruction and professional development, legal, and any organizing campaign throughout the state. And all of the UNISERV directors, which are the education advocates, are under me. And recently I have been given the honor of being the Executive Director of ESEA. And with that, I had to turn over my legal hat to my executive director because I needed to be able to advocate at CCSD as the executive director. And during that time, we were watching the school board meeting and noticing that there was not a voice for the working conditions of the teachers and the support professionals, which are the kids' learning conditions, right? And we were just watching it saying, well, where is their voice? And we'd watch teachers and support professionals stand up and give public comment, and there was no comment back. And so I decided to run. And that's pretty much how it worked. Literally on March, I think it was March 13th, I decided to run. And I put in my money and then the school district shut down. So yeah, so it's been an interesting campaign because I do have a background in campaigns and elections. And we've never run a true virtual campaign before. And pretty much that's what I've had to do is run a virtual campaign. Of course, we do mailings and door hangers, but I haven't had the real opportunity to talk to people the way I want to. And so I'm really excited to be here.
Well, thank you for being here. You know, this virtual campaign, and we've been doing this for years, virtual campaigning, so it comes right into our ballpark.
Right.
You know, so when COVID hit and you can't knock on doors, we're still moving along with the internet and the video programming and all that stuff. So we haven't slowed down since COVID, that's what I'm saying.
That's great.
But Ms. Guzman, where is District A?
So District A runs from Henderson all the way down to Laughlin.
Laughlin?
Laughlin, that's correct. I've been down in Laughlin hanging door hangers. Yeah, it's hot.
We have plenty of water.
Oh, I do, I do.
You know, I got friends in Laughlin.
Do you? That's great. That's so fabulous.
He doesn't have friends. He doesn't have friends.
So yeah, so it's all the way down to Laughlin. And in fact, we're cutting lists to do door hangers and searchlight because I have searchlight too.
How about Mooppa?
No.
No. Okay, so you have searchlight and Laughlin.
And Henderson.
So you got Boulder City?
I have Boulder City, yes.
I have friends up in Boulder City too, although Jim will say I don't have any.
No, he does though.
I love Boulder City.
So I know you were talking about how you got involved in the trustee race, but let's hear it again. What really gets your goat? Why are you actually decide to put yourself on the ballots for public scrutiny?
That's exactly right. And if you were to look at my Myers-Briggs, it absolutely says that I would never run for office.
Right.
But education means a-
Just really not leaning in or some Myers-Briggs, so what are you?
That's like a personal-
I know what it is, what are you?
So I'm a defender.
Oh, I'm an ENTP.
You're an, I'm an INTJ.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so yeah.
I don't know what the heck you guys are talking about.
Yeah, so I'm a defender. And the thing is though, that I would never ever run for office. I'm an introvert normally.
Right.
And it just-
So you're behind the cameras type?
I am. I will support a candidate, I will do whatever they need. Please don't make me make a speech. But yeah, so, but I've been doing it and I love it, you know, it's great. I'm very lucky because my son is helping me and he's my campaign manager, so-
What's his name?
His name is Justin Guzman. And he has his political science degree. So he knows how to do things the right way so I don't feel like I'm flubbing up, you know? But I was sitting in a school board meeting when they were talking about the coronavirus. And I had just been in a meeting with Superintendent Jarrah, and he told me what the plan was for the district. And I was sitting through the presentation that they were doing for the board. And in no way did they talk about how it was affecting what was happening within Las Vegas, right? And all of a sudden, I'm sitting in the board meeting and Wynn is getting ready to shut down. But still, they're talking about having kids in the classroom. And I was like, we don't have a plan. This is ridiculous. We don't have a plan. And I thought, I'm a planner. I would have asked, what is the plan? Wynn just shut down, you know? I mean, that's a big deal for a casino to shut down. And so that was it. I turned to my president and I said-
They don't even have doors.
I know, I know. I was like, I looked at my president and I said, I think I'm going to run for the board. What do you think? And she's like, I'm behind you 100%. And I was so gratified that she understood that that's what I was thinking. And because she was just as concerned as I was. I mean, I just think about like myself, when I grew up, my parents had an interesting way of sending us to our grandparents when things, you know, we had to shift around. And so we had to live with our grandparents and our house burnt down. And I lived with my grandparents for about a year.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
It was the best thing that happened to me as a kid.
Insurance money came in?
Well, I have no idea. But what I do know is that I got to spend that year with my grandparents. And one of those things that they always taught me is that when I put my mind to something, I need to follow through.
True.
And so that's pretty much what I do. And you know, and when you have Jewish grandparents, as I do, they remind you constantly.
The Jewish folks has this thing, I don't know what it's called, right outside their-
The mezuzah?
Is it a prayer, supposed to protect the household?
Yes.
I thought that was very neat. Do you have one?
I do. I do have one, yeah.
So for people that don't have children or not involved in their children's education or have no clue what a school board trustee is, could you explain exactly what a school board trustee does?
So the school board trustee makes decisions for the district. So when you look at policies and things that govern the district, right? That's all a trustee. Their only employee is the superintendent. That's their only employee.
It doesn't seem that way in a lot of these trustees and meetings and the media. It's just, I don't know, it just seems like the superintendent is the one that's running the show and the trustee's taking the orders from the superintendent. For example, hence banning Kevin Chile. You can't come to any school anymore. I'm like, whoa, 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 wait a minute. I thought the trustee was in charge. Why is the superintendent telling a trustee you can't show up at any school? So stuff like that, people get confused when they, you know, because I mean, I think, I always thought that the trustee was in charge and the trustee is the one that makes the contract for the superintendent, blah, blah, blah.
Well, a lawyer does that, right?
Right, but-
But they're the ones that approve it, that's right. They're the ones that approve it.
But you know, after all this media attention to school board meetings, is it really the trustee is the one in charge, not the superintendent?
That's a really good question that I wish I could answer. But in theory, yes. Yes. So, but what's great about the Clark County School District is that they have balanced governance. And balanced governance means that even though the superintendent is their employee, when they govern the district, it's together, right? And so maybe that's the reason why people see the superintendent is in charge is because what you're actually seeing is that the school board is utilizing that balanced governance. And so they used to be really great at balanced governance. But I will admit that they pick and choose now what they want to use from that theory.
What about the teachers' union? Are they in charge of the school?
I don't think so. I think, so, you know, I don't know. I know that the Support Professionals Association, what we do is we try to have a partnership with the district. And we have a really great partnership with HR. And we utilize that to keep our folks safe and to keep the kids safe. There are times when you see the teachers' unions, and there are two of them in Clark County, and you wonder-
Why two?
Well, because the Clark County Education Association disaffiliated from the Nevada State Education Association. And when they did that, they disaffiliated from the National Education Association. And the National Education Association wanted a teachers' union in the state of Nevada that was located in Clark County. And so we have some amazing teachers in the NEA Southern Nevada. One of them is running for trustee, her name is Alexis Salt. And she is, she's an amazing educator and she will probably be a really great trustee.
You just endorsed her.
Well, my organization endorsed her. And they go through a really deep vetting process and so I trust them implicitly.
So you've brought up a few different unions. So what exact, what union were you a part of or in the leadership role of? And you said support staff?
Yeah, so that's the Education Support Employees Association. So they're a part, so the Teamsters always laugh at me because I have to explain it with my hands.
Oh, no.
Okay, so-
We're around Italians a lot.
Cool. All right, so the National Education Association is our national affiliate. And it's 3.1 million members, right?
Wow, that's a huge number.
Yeah, we're the largest, yeah. We're the largest teachers' union and support professionals are included in that. And then it's the Nevada State Education Association. And most of the Nevada State Education Association is support professionals. Most of our members are the support professionals throughout the state of Nevada. And in Clark County, we have NEA of Southern Nevada as our teachers' union. And then we have the Education Support Employees Association, which is the support professionals' union. So it's really an arced thing. And I work for the Nevada State Education Association. And part of my duties is to be the executive director for the support professionals' union.
What are the dues for the union?
It depends, right? So the locals set their own dues and then the state-
How much is that ballpark?
Usually it's about 50 bucks.
A month?
No, usually it's, the local only gets about 50 bucks.
A year?
Yeah, from each member, you know? And then the state affiliate is usually around 300 to 350 bucks, depending. Now, understand that our support professionals only pay 60% of that. That's why I say it depends. But that pays for all the staff. And then the National Education Association, the last time I checked, they were about 125 bucks. But that pays for all of our legal and things like that because they cover our legal fees. We cover legal too, we go half and half with NEA. But yeah, it's very complicated what our dues are.
Okay, you're trying to replace who?
Deanna Wright.
Deanna Wright? And Dr. Young is termed out?
Yes.
Did Carolyn Edwards leave last time? We're quite familiar with all three of the trustees. What are you going to bring to the table, Ms. Guzman? What do you see that's wrong with the school board that you feel with your presence on the board that you could input change for the betterment of the student and the faculty? What are you going to bring to the table and what do you see that's wrong?
So I'm going to bring their point of view. So I work with the teachers and support staff throughout, the support professionals throughout Clark County. I work with them. I know that thinking about making sure that there are covers for food service workers out in the sun is important. And it is a detail that is not thought of by the school board, right? So when they're making a decision, they just got a waiver, the US Department of Agriculture waiver, so that they can give out breakfast and lunch and you don't have to want the student ID anymore. But who's handing that out? It's the food service worker. And what have we done to make sure that they're okay, right? The trustees will say, oh, this is great. This is wonderful that we get to hand out food. We handed out five million meals, right? But yet I'm going to say, okay, this is great. And I'm glad we passed out five million meals. But who's doing it and are we making sure that they're safe, right? And I think that perspective is not on the board. And I also have a background in mediation and in interest-based bargaining. And so I feel that that will help me with the different personalities that are on the board.
Yeah, there are a few interesting personalities on that board.
No, and they all have interesting perspectives. And I am a school board nerd. I've watched their meetings and their work sessions. And they all have different perspectives on how things are done. And I just feel like because I have worked with the board and I know how boards are supposed to work, that I would be an asset to them.
So you're not a stranger to the board then?
No.
You know, several sessions ago, and correct me if I'm wrong, several sessions ago, they passed this law for recreational marijuana.
Yes.
And the purpose of this law being passed is supposed to tax marijuana and supposed to help with teachers', you know, pay raises and education. But that was several sessions ago. And I mean, I haven't seen any teachers getting a pay raise from this marijuana money. Do you know where this marijuana money went? And you could call me a conspiracy theorist. I think the marijuana money went to build a Allegiant Stadium, if you ask me, but-
It didn't.
Then explain. Where is this marijuana money that's supposed to help a teacher's pay increases?
So it isn't really supposed to, if you look at the law, it really isn't supposed to quote unquote, give pay increases. What it's supposed to do is it's supposed to help education, and it does. So when they put the marijuana money into the rainy day fund, that was because they were going to use it for vouchers. And vouchers are really bad for public education. So they decided to put it into the rainy day fund and allocate the money in the next legislative session. Well, what happened in the last legislative session is that they had the money for the 3% raise for the teachers and support professionals, and they sent that out to all of the districts. But the marijuana money was still there. It was still in the rainy day fund. And so when COVID hit, we were lucky that we had that rainy day fund and the marijuana money because that's what filled it so that education didn't take as huge a hit as it was going to.
What kind of hit did it take though?
It was only $118 million, I think. I'm not, don't quote me on that.
Why would it take that hit if kids are not coming to school?
Because, well, actually kids were in school, they were online. But the reason why it would take that hit is because tax money goes into filling the fund that funds education. So this next academic year, they needed the funding to continue what they started last year. And they had to cut, they had to cut from different pots of money. Like I know one of the schools in my district, in District A foothills, got hit pretty hard because it was monies that were allocated for special programs. And so they cut those. And so I just, but it would have been worse had they not had that rainy day fund.
Oh yeah, it would have been worse. You brought up something though, that was pretty interesting. So why, and again, I appreciate the fact you're running for the school board, but now that I know a little bit more about your background, why are vouchers such a bad idea? And I'm assuming that you think ESAs are a bad idea as well.
They're the same.
Okay, so explain to me why public education is just terrible in the state. If you look at the numbers, right? If you look at the numbers, so I don't understand why we have such a group of people that are entrenched into not wanting to try to try something new. That frustrates me at a great level, but you know more about it than I do. So could you explain that?
You know, they say the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over, expect a different result.
Well, so let's go back a little bit because ESAs, vouchers, they all come from the very same place. And that is to starve public education. That's what it is, it's to starve public education. It really isn't to improve the education of your children. It is to starve it so that they can turn public education into private education. And they've been doing it since the 1980s when they started with charter schools. And now they're doing ESAs. It's a concentrated thing that they're trying to do. And the thing is that public education is in every state constitution that they provide a public education for students K through 12. And so if you're starving public education by taking the money away and putting it into vouchers, then of course, the education, the public education is going to be horrible because they can't, they don't have the resources that they need to teach the kids. They just don't have it. And so from my perspective, I would think that people would want to put more money into public education because it's guaranteed, right? It's guaranteed through your state constitution that you have public education. So I would think that that's where you would want to put your money. But instead, people are taking it out. And because there's nowhere else to get it, they're going to take it out of the public education fund.
So basically, the reason why public education is failing is because we have too many people trying to pull money out of public education and do charter schools and do school vouchers. But so-
In my opinion, I think charter, yeah, that's just my opinion.
But you also get federal dollars. But you also get federal dollars that come in and are attached to a student. And if you're paying, if you're paying your taxes, then in a sense, that's your money. So why is it not your right as an individual to say? And I, I think it's about four thousand dollars a student is what the federal government sends into Nevada?
No.
Okay.
It's not.
Even if it's a dollar, so let's just say, let's just say it's one dollar.
Yes.
I'm paying tax, it's my tax dollars though.
Right.
So that's still my dollars, so I should be able to spend my dollars the way I want to. I'm playing devil's advocate.
And I appreciate that, but the thing is that when you take that dollar. And then you say to me, but Lisa, I'm paying so much money. Because these kids over here are going to prison. Well, that's right, because you took the dollar that I was using to prevent the, the um, school to prison pipeline. So I mean, also, also the federal monies that you are giving to the school district. Are going to the neediest students in the district. They're not going to the students that um, are, are able to say that their parents could have paid for their education. They're going to your neediest students. They're also going to help special education, right? And special education takes a lot of money. Because each child has an individual education program. And they have to have staff and they have to have resources and all that costs money. And um, and, and the money that goes out, goes towards making sure all of these systems within the public school district that is guaranteed to you, Mr. Taxpayer. Continue, right? And so I, I think the way that it, the money flows is, is something that people don't realize. And they think that the district is just throwing money away willy-nilly and that's not true. Jason Gowdy, the CFO, is amazing on the way he makes a dollar stretch.
Okay, so here's, so here's, and here's why um, I really enjoy doing these shows. Because, no, because here's the thing. So what you just said. I'll be honest with you. I disagree with quite a bit of it. However, here's, here's what I need viewers and listeners to understand. You made an extremely good point and I appreciate it very much. You said, okay, well, everybody just assumes, right? And I'm, you know, I'm, I'm like generalizing your statement, but this is, this is how I took it. Everybody just assumes that their tax dollars are being wasted because public education stinks, right? Okay, well, you made a good point when you said, but people don't understand the system and how that money moves, right? So guess what? I'm gonna say the same thing I've been saying forever. So shame on us as taxpayers. If we're going to complain. It's our job because we're supposed to be the boss, right?
Right.
It's our job to understand how that money flows.
I agree with you.
And if we think we're so damn smart, then we should know how that works. So people need to educate themselves more.
I agree.
But, but you were talking about these needy kids and kids with special um, um, needs for, as far as education. But don't the federal government give them their own, let's, let's call it four thousand dollars? Give each child, no matter what they need, four thousand dollars for going into school?
No, that's not how that works. Um, so, so the way that it works is that there's a funding formula. And the funding formula is how the district gets its money. And there's a certain amount.
Isn't it per child?
It's per pupil for the state. It's per pupil for the state.
And how much per pupil for the state?
It's about fifty-four hundred dollars.
Fifty-four hundred dollars, so. So if I, if I wanna take my fifty-four hundred dollars and put in a private school, can I do that? Because that, every child is having fifty-four hundred dollars, right?
Every child is allocated fifty-four hundred dollars if they come to school, okay? If they don't come to school, it's the average attendance. So you think that they're getting money for every student, but they're not.
So they have a poor attendance um, record.
Then you may not be getting money.
That, 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 that student is not gonna get the fifty-four hundred dollars. I mean, the school's not gonna get the fifty-four hundred dollars for that student. But if, it, it, it all boils down to parental involvement.
It does.
You know, if, 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 if I, if I'm, if I'm seeing my, my child is, is, is excelling in a, in a classroom and they're going slow with my kid. And my kid is like, you know, bored because he or she's excelling. And, and I said, okay, well, if I go to a private school in a regular fourth grade in, in, in the, in the Clark County School District and a regular fourth grade in, in a private um, school is, is, the private school excels. Because they're probably teaching fifth grade level in the fourth, in the normal fourth grade of, of a county school. And the reason why, reason why I say that, because I had my child in, in the pre-K through uh, first grade in private school. And then when this ESA started, I, I was, you know, I was down for that. I was like, hell yeah, you know? I'm, I'm tired of spending nine hundred dollars a month. Because that's probably about how much I was spending, about nine hundred dollars a month for my child's education from, from pre-K, K and first grade in private school. In fact, it was Lamb of God. And uh, although they teach very minimum um, religion. And uh, and then when this ESA came out, I, and I, I'm like, okay, let me pull my child out of the private school. Because they had a criteria saying that you had to be in the public school for, I don't know how many days, I forget. To, 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 to get this money. So I, I took my kid out of there, out of Lamb of God. I, I, I put her in Shakembach. Right? Which is all the way up north and um, for second grade. And, and um, they were moving slower than what she was accustomed to. Like in, in Lamb of God and pre-K and K and first, she was getting tons of homework. When she went to Shakembach, she thought it was a vacation. Hardly any homework, you know? And they weren't as strict, as strict as, as, as Lamb of God was. And the educational factor was, was so much more lower than the standards were in, in the private school. Because if you're teaching fourth grade in a regular school, in a private school, they're at fifth and sixth, but they're still in fourth. But they're teaching fifth and sixth in, in the private school. So when they killed this ESA thing, I was pissed off about it, you know? Because I'm thinking, okay, if, if, if the government is giving fifty-four hundred dollars per student. And I'm getting, and my, my kid is getting fifty-four hundred dollars for going to, to school. And they're keeping, I'm keeping her at an attendance record that, that she's not gonna miss any days. Why am I being penalized? Because I got some parent that's not involved in their kids and don't care about their kids. While I care about my child's education tremendously, but they don't care about their child, child's education. Why am I being penalized? Why is my kid being penalized? And that's how I look at it.
I, 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 I see your thought process and I, I go back to um, a, a theory that I, I learned when I was younger and it's the good of the commons. And um, so making sure that everyone receives the same thing. So can we go back to your parent involvement?
Sure.
Cause um, I think that if you are truly a parent who is involved and your child is excelling, having a conversation with the teacher and letting her know that you see that this is happening. I think would have been really.
Who said I didn't have that conversation? Come on, look at me, I'm vocal. I've had that conversation. I, I went past teacher. I, I went right to my trustee. I went right to the principal.
Cause the, the thing is that they should have made accommodations for your child.
They did not.
Well, they should have. So in, in. Yeah, because um, and that's very interesting. Because the teachers that I know that I work with, they do make accommodations, right? For their bright students, for their students who are struggling, for um, just their regular students. Because there are places where they excel, right? Um, and I, I work with a lot of national board certified teachers. So um, it surprises me that, that your, your child did not get that accommodation. I will be honest with you, because if you are vocal and you tell them, um, usually they do make that accommodation. So, so just that piece. And then also in the, in the Clark County School District, you also have school choice. And your child could have gone to a magnet school too.
She's in charter now.
Well, yeah, see, and it's a public school.
But she has strong subjects that she excels in and, and then she has one weak one that's math. Reading, grammar, literature, all that stuff. She's like off the charts in her.
She, she gets that from high.
Quiet. And, and uh, and math, math not so much. But, but, but you know, they, they, they try to make accommodations, but again, they can't because they're overcrowded for one.
Yeah.
They're underpaid for two.
Yeah.
They don't have the resources for three.
Right, all the reasons against ESA.
That's why people, that's why people wanna go to private school, because you know, it's, it's small classroom sessions.
Right.
You get one-on-one.
Right.
You know, you, 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 you teach and, and then, and then when the ACLU came up saying that, you know, religion was the reason why. We're, we're, we're gonna put this kibosh on this ESA, it kind of upset me. Because when she was in Lamb of God, they probably only teach forty-five minutes of religious instruction. You know, which, which I didn't see a problem with that, you know? But, but I, I think that we need to bring the ESAs back to the table. It, it's my perspective.
I will just say that that starves public schools.
Then they need to find another way, because you're starving kids that, that, that wants to excel, wants to go. And, and they're not getting that, they're not getting that, and some of these kids are not getting that personal one-on-one teaching.
Because they're starved. They have overcrowded classrooms. They have, they don't have the restore. So as a trustee, I can go and lobby to make sure that the monies that are um, supposed to come to Clark County. Come to Clark County. There is um, there is a bill that they passed. It's called um, SB five forty-three that they passed last year. And unfortunately, it hurts the rural districts. But it does um, fund Clark County School District. What I would like to see is that they fund all of the districts, the way they are planning on funding the Clark County School District. Because according to Superintendent Jara, it's, that money is super important. And it's going to assist in helping out and making sure that we can lower class sizes. That we can give the students the attention that they need. But properly funding public schools is something that um, we need to do. And if they were to do that, you wouldn't have a need for ESA. Because then you would have the, the proper education that you're looking for for your daughter.
And I think, and I think too, like um, one of the, and this is just not really a question, it's more of a general statement.
Okay.
I think one of the things too that like, well, obviously, I have some issues with the, the public education system. And I don't really agree with the whole nationalizing it. But the one thing that I do find interesting, that a lot of people, that I haven't heard a lot of discussion with. Amongst the people that talk about how terrible the public schools are here in Clark County is there's a lot of, Clark County is a very unique county. First off, it's the fifth largest school district in the country. And second off, one of the things about, and it pretty much, Clark County, let's be honest, is pretty much Las Vegas. It's, it's a very, and Henderson and North Las Vegas, it's, it's a very transient city. You have a lot of people that come in from all different parts of the country. Uh, you have so many differing um, nationalities. You have so many differing uh, like uh, speech. Like, so there's a real unique challenge to Clark County that I don't think that a lot of people that are against uh, or have issues with the public school system, which I'm one, don't uh, don't actually think about. Like there's a lot of challenges in the Clark County School District. So as far as like um, English as a second language. I heard something recently that there's like s- s- between sixty-five and seventy-five different languages. That are spoke in schools in the Clark County School District. Uh, as a trustee, like is there anything that a trustee could do to help that? As far as bringing teachers in to communicate those differing languages?
So it, it all depends. The two, the two languages that are um, spoken in the Clark County School District overall are Spanish and Tag.
Tagala.
Tagala, thank you. Um, so those are the two that we really um, need to make sure that all of the information that we have are translated. But otherwise, they have tried to recruit teachers from different places to assist with students. And making sure that they um, learn English as a second language. But I, my first language is English, obviously, right? But I can teach students that speak other languages. And I don't have to speak their language to teach them English.
Right.
Right? So knowing that, um, I think we have some really great ESL educators in the Clark County School District. Um, I just don't think they have the resources that they used to have. There used to be um, a whole community of TESOL, they call them TESOL, T-E-S-O-L. Um, teachers that would share their um, resources with each other. Um, not online, because it, I, I am a before online teacher. But we would share our resources at different conferences and things like that. And um, and I just don't think that that is happening as much. Well, obviously now with COVID, they can't. But I don't think that's happening as much, being able to share those resources. And I think that that's an important piece of teaching, you know, they always say the best thief is a teacher. And the reason they say that is because we're gonna watch how you teach something. And if we see that you're getting through to students that we were having a hard time getting through to, we're gonna ask you. And we're gonna borrow your, your lesson and we're gonna teach it, because we want to get to those students. And um, so if we see a good idea, we're gonna take it. And um, I, I truly believe that we have those types of educators here in Clark County. Um, and I think that we have support professionals that are just as motivated, just, they want the students to have the best education pro- possible, you know? My support professionals are the bus drivers that pick them up in the morning, you know, they're the food service workers, they're the clerks. They're the paraprofessionals and they are just as invested as a teacher is.
Forget those crossing guards.
Oh, I know, right? They, they put their lives on the line. I was driving.
This town is nuts. There's no way it'd be a crossing guard.
So Ms. Guzman, um, moving forward.
Yes.
Epidemics, the epidemic shut down the school.
Yeah.
You got sixty-seven thousand, which was a number that was in the news, sixty-seven thousand students. The Clark County School District don't know how to get a hold of them.
Yeah, they're, they're working hard getting them though.
You, you got, you got wifi problems.
Yes.
All over the uh, the county, so students can't get online for, for that online education. You got students that don't have um, the ability to get Chromebooks or, or laptops, you know? And, and plus you got students that um, can't be taught by watching a computer. I mean, they, they need that one-on-one personal teaching. And then you have special ed students. So with all this, what are you gonna do?
So the thing is that I can't do anything right now, right?
Well, once elected.
Once elected, um, hopefully by the time I'm elected and um, and, and I, gosh.
They find a cure. You're like, I hope they find a cure before they elect me.
No, no, I, I, you know, I, I do hope for a cure, if nothing else, to make sure that my mom can go shopping, you know? But uh, yeah, uh, I get seated, God willing, um, that I'm elected um, in January. Right? And so by then, I'm hoping that at least we're in a hybrid model. And that the, the um, special needs students are back full-time. Um, but, but we don't know, right? We don't know how this is gonna work. I mean, wearing masks is really important so that we can go back to school. One of the, the things that my um, my team always talks about and their support professionals and teachers is that they want the kids back in school. Um, they do, they want them back. They are, they are not the ones that are, are saying, you know, I don't want my students. But what they also want is to be safe. But what they also want is to be safe. And, um, they want, they don't want to bring the virus into the classroom, give it to your child and that your child goes home and gives it to everyone who lives in your house, right? So, um.
It's a lot of sick people.
It is, it's a lot of sick people, but it's happening, right? It's, it's happening across the United States and they see it happening. And they don't want it to happen to their students because they love them like kids, right? So knowing that, um, my hope is that by November, we're in a hybrid model. And that, uh, by February, everyone's back.
You think so?
Uh, that's my hope, yeah. Because it's, it's important for the students to come back, right?
And my daughter wants to come back.
Oh, sure.
Because we were thinking about homeschool and I was against it. But now she's, she's got a really good taste of homeschooling. She's like, I want to, I want to go to school.
Yeah. Well, and, and my son is, um, he's attending Arizona State University and he's becoming an English as a Second Language teacher. And, um, and he is taking a semester off because he's supposed to be going into classrooms this year and observing. It's his junior year of college. But there's no classrooms for him to go into, right? And so what's he going to do? So he's, he's taking an off year, whatever that means, because I was never allowed. But he's taking an off year and, um, and, and he's working full-time at a preschool, helping, um, parents who can't be home with their Wi-Fi and, and helping them, you know, log into their classrooms and things like that. Because he doesn't want to lose learning how to be a teacher. So he's chosen to do that. But I think that, that it's a, it's a hardship for everyone right now. I don't think anyone has it easy. And I think everyone wants school to come back online. The best thing about what, what has occurred is that, is that we all know that we need education for the economy. So when they say, you know, when the teachers come and knock on your door and say, hey, we, we need funding, you'll know that, yeah, they need funding because they're helping the economy, you know? Um, I think that's, and I really did a stretch for a positive there. So, uh, because I don't find anything positive about Corona or, or any of this. I would prefer to have kids in school.
Well, this epidemic really changed the, the way the world thinks now. So, I mean, now everybody's going online to get anything done.
I know.
Shopping, anything, everything is online, so. But we do appreciate you coming, Ms. Guzman. Um, could you look into the camera and, and tell folks why they should, um, um, circle the little bubble next to your name for the mail-in ballot and, uh, put it in that little secure sleeve envelope? And I say this all the time because people screw it up. And then put it in the actual envelope that says paid US postage on there and sign and print their name on the back of it and stick it in the mail before November 3rd by 7:00 PM. Could you tell people why they need to do that? And, and, and why they need to vote for you and, um, any point of contact you have?
Oh, thanks. So, um, I think you should vote for me because I truly know the educational process. I know the Clark County School District. And I understand the budget, which is going to be critical in the coming year. And so if you want to get to know, um, a little bit about me, you can go to my website, which is, um, lisagusmanfortrustee.com. You can follow me on Facebook. I'm also on Twitter at LM Guzman NV. And, um, you can, you can direct message me anytime.
Thank you, Ms. Guzman.
Thank you.
Folks, that's Lisa Guzman. She's a candidate for Clark County School Board District Leader. A, um, she seems like she knows exactly what she's talking about and she wants to shake up that school board district for the betterment of the parents and the, the students and the faculty and teachers. And Ms. Guzman, sounds like she's the prime candidate to do that. This is Steve Sanson, Jim Jonas for Veterans in Politics. Until next time.